I'd like to call the Athens City Planning Commission to order. All of the commissioners are here, so we have established a quorum. If there's anyone that would like to speak at today's meeting, I do ask that you stand up now. Do you affirm to, or and swear to tell the truth to this commission?
Yes.
Thank you. You may be seated, and we can begin. The first case is number 09-07, Julie Garner, 4770 Fisher Road Lot Split. Julie Garner here to speak.
Yeah.
Would you like to address the commission, just sort of, I guess, basically say what defining that lot split? And then you can either sit at the table or at the podium, and then our planner will sort of follow suit with more explanation. And if you don't like to, you can also have the planner speak for you if he has enough information.
She wasn't really planning to talk.
Were you planning? If you weren't, I mean, it's fine if the planner can. I guess that's another way to do it.
It's fine. I can answer questions.
Okay. Well, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you. And Paula, if you don't have, if she doesn't need to have any input, that's fine, too. It's just if questions come up.
I'm actually going to let Mr. Paskey handle this. John communicated with Ms. Garner the entire process. It's a pretty clear-cut project as far as an approval on it, at least in my opinion, but I'll allow John to cover that with you.
All right, thank you.
Yes, it's a simple lot split. The reason it's here is because it's in the three-mile radius, but it does meet the road frontage with the depth ratio and the engineer's approval, and the Health Department has signed off on it. The only reason it's here is because it's less than five acres. If it was more than, it would be a cut-and-dry piece of property. So since it's less than five, it has to go through Planning Commission according to our code.
So your recommendation is to approve the lot split.
Yes.
Is there any questions from commissioners, then?
Okay, so basically, everybody's in favor of it. There's no problem with this.
Yeah, and Paula, Logue, you had a chance to review this as well, right?
I did review it. It meets all the requirements for the lot split. The important thing for, at least in my mind, the most important thing when we're dealing with a lot split in the three-mile limits but outside of the city of Athens is that the Health Department has reviewed it and approved it. They have. Chuck Hammer from the Health Department's signature is right here on top of that survey. They had no problems with it, so it does, it meets the county's requirements. County engineer also, they've reviewed it for accuracy. So there's, I don't see what there's any complications or problems would be with approving it.
Okay. Well, is there any discussion on the part of the commissioners, then? Or otherwise, we'll take this to a vote?
I move that way, except the lot split of this.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All ayes opposed? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
The next case on our agenda is number 08-13, Diversified Properties, Madison Heights, proposed change on that project that we had previously seen. Again, if you're going to be talking during this case, please either take a seat at the table or stand at the podium. Since we've seen, I don't know how, the best way to approach this might be to have you guys sort of reintroduce this, since we probably will not make a vote, I imagine, today, since we're all sort of seeing this, but you never know. So do you'd like to go ahead and re-present this, present the change to the commission? Please go ahead.
Very good. Thank you. I'm Jim Bloom from Diversified Properties. This is in regard to Madison Heights, a residential development that Diversified Properties has been working on since 2005. We have had more than one development concept and approval, actually, three, I believe, at this point. And a lot of those concepts have been originally directed, at least in our minds, based on our interpretation of the Athens Comprehensive Plan and what we think is local consumer need. The current plan, which was approved, and I believe, when I say approved, all the way through council pending the final plat being produced and signed, featured seven detached residences. Again, we are, I don't have the dates in front of me, but that was a fully approved through the Planning Commission and City Council. During the course of that investigation, we've had what I would characterize as continuous communication with the city regarding the complexities of the infrastructure, location, connection, and development. And only recently have these issues been fully resolved, and actual engineering drawings are in the hands right now of the appropriate city agencies. Those have been delivered to the city. The change, or I would call it, and I'll be specific, the minor alteration, or not substantial change, I will characterize it as, is to take the five detached residences that are on the upper portion of the property and mask them in a two-unit and a three-unit building as opposed to the five independent pieces. And that's a direct conclusion of the finalization of this infrastructure issue, which has really driven the majority of the development. It's a, for those of you that don't know directly, it's a concise area that we are attempting to develop appropriately. The installation of city utilities, water sewer and storm sewer, as well as AEP, is in a very defined area. There's not a lot of wiggle room, would be the way I would characterize it. As this infrastructure development became finalized, we took a second look and said, you know, any room we could buy by making a minor alteration is going to allow for, candidly, easier installation and access to these utilities, as well as, you know, the circulation on the site has always been challenging from day one. This buys us a little bit more room in one corner, as John will share with you when you go over the actual drawings with him. The result of this minor alteration is the floor plans of each of the five residences will virtually be identical to what is already approved. Square footage, commensurate, if not almost identical, style to what has currently been approved. And again, as I, I'm going to reiterate, increased circulation capacity, a bit of additional room to develop the required infrastructure will result. And as an aside, we believe that the final design alteration will translate into increased affordability to the Athens consumer. Now for our opinion. It is our opinion that this is not a substantive change to the approved plan, especially since the final plat has yet to be generated. The spirit size, style, and end product is virtually identical to the approved residences with the obvious change that we've masked them in a two and a three-unit building. We ask the commission to recognize this development has been fully and completely scrutinized in every detail and all aspects, as many of the commission members are probably sorry to see us here. And ask that we can move forward with the preparation of our final plat with this minor alteration.
Do you want to share with them?
Yeah. I don't know. Do you have anything in front of you as far as?
We just have the, sort of showing the, what was originally accepted to the change of the, so the wets.
This is a little bit easier to see. This here is the original plan here.
Okay.
And this is the revised, highlight the yellow one, I'll show you the floor plan in a sec. Obviously, the main flower shop location, nothing's changed, and, well, carriage for the garage, nothing's changed. Then we have, you know, this very vegetated, pretty severe hillside right here. And then up top, we have five residences. Up here, now we have the five residences. You can see what we've done is this area here inside the curb, which constricts, we've basically turned it all into green space. We've allowed all this to remain, because this is a little bit tight coming through here. We're allowing all of this to just remain as-is by masking these buildings, which kind of obviously clustered together. And we've bought a little bit of space at the top of the ridge here between that and
What is the title?
back of the building to allow for access, but again, I'm just forgetting, remembering what Jim said, dealing with Andy and all the power that be trying to get some water, the suburbs, electric, everything back in there. There's not a lot of room. So my idea was to try to just, you know, shorten this footprint a little bit, en masse it a little bit differently, and try to avoid some of this constriction here, get us through that spot there, because there's not a lot of room there.
So you're saying the square footage is essentially the same for each of these buildings?
I guess, yes.
And I assume because they're linked buildings, there's probably some kind of firewall differences or something like that?
Yeah, well, we have a drawing of this event, which will show how the units are separated. It's a standard airspace, certain kind of a fire-driven drywall which goes in between. We've done it a lot. This particular plan here, which I'll let you try to pick at, is the approved plan. I'll just lay it down right here. And that plan, the two main floors of this plan have about 1,520 or 300 square feet. The new plan has about 1,570 square feet. So it's a 2% or 3% difference. And that's just got to do with the way, when we mask them, how the walls line up. If you look at the new plan, you can see just by a quick overview, the linear nature of the plan is the same. I'm going to just point to the center, which is the first floor. You've got the same garage here. You've got the foyer. You've got the stairway, the half-bath, the kitchen, the eating area, and the living room. So it's the same plan. Upstairs, you've got two bedrooms here and here. And in between the two bedrooms, you've got basically amassing two more bathrooms, closets, wash and dryer rooms, et cetera.
Okay, I don't see any difference.
Yeah, I understand.
This is also approved, and that's also approved. Are we looking at different things? Okay, this one right there, okay. Looks like you have two copies. Why don't we shoot one over that way? This is the old, that's the new. Okay, great.
There you go.
Because I see the differences, the bump out between there and there.
Right. It's kind of.
1,578 square feet, 1,520.
Very, very close. This just turned out to be, which is nice, a little bit larger because the lines line up. But it's identical, the actual footprint, but this is actually a little bit nicer as it relates to the foyer here, more comfortable.
And really, what we're seeing is the example, the middle one for this one, is that what I'm looking at? Because the only difference would be the windows, I assume, on other sides, outside and inside.
And the reality of the five units was that the buildings were separated, but they were so close together that.
They weren't that close together. That's the typical city.
They're about 14 feet, pretty close.
How many people, I wasn't on the commission when you first came in. How many people were proposed to be in each of, like, the units, one through five, versus now?
The same.
Same.
Everything's the same. Driveways are the same, walkways are the same, surface area of the roof is the same.
Does the consolidation diminish the desirability on the part of the young professionals that, you know, you originally, you know, versus what looks to be more of an academic type of?
No, I think it's going to enhance it, actually. Because, because in reality, because they're so close.
Do they have those up there?
I don't know. John, do they have these? Do they have these? I'd like to address that issue, if I could, regarding that desirability issue. I think at the end of the day, the location, and one of the reasons that we have moved at a slow pace on this development is it's as great a residential location as there is to be developed in the city of Athens. And we believe that one of the enhancements of this alteration is going to be, at the end of the day, more affordability for the buyer.
So this is going to look more like your project on Harold a little bit?
In the sense that it's attached.
Yeah.
In the sense that it's attached, yeah. But we think it'll be, because the desirability of the location, the amenities are virtually identical to what we approved as the detached residences that, we do think it'll be desirable. Obviously, that's, you know, our motivation.
Can I ask you a question just off the path there, as far as the traffic flow? Originally, I think you had the traffic being able to go both ways, all around. Did you redesign that to where there would just be one flow to answer the concerns that people had about the bottom entrance of Madison?
Paula, do you remember?
I think the final thing was we're going to have a no-left-turn sign out, and that's what I believe council ultimately did.
No, yeah, yeah.
At the bottom.
On the bottom, no left turn. That was the resolution because an adjacent neighbor had a concern about their ability to get in and out and park in their designated parking area that they own. That's how we came to that resolution.
Right.
Plus, I had heard from a number of residents who use that hill that that might be kind of a dangerous exit area, so close to the stop sign to the intersection.
And I believe that's how that resolution evolved.
I'm curious, was that, that would be a new addition, right? The no-left-turn. It's not like the current, the Athens Flower Shop was not allowed to make left turns, patrons.
Correct.
I think the concern was, that was brought up at the council level.
That's right.
Because I don't remember that, the commission.
No, it was at the council, started, two considerations of the council at the time were, one is the elevation of the upper exit egress, where there was, the slope was too high. And the other one was whether there would be, what kind of flow was going to be happening circular or otherwise.
Yeah, I know the elevation issue was brought up here, too.
So really, what you're asking is that this just be kind of like approved, I guess, along the way. I do know that there have been some changes. I believe we want to speak, have Jessica Dine, the project and development manager, speak, say a few words. I imagine that some of this, I noticed that the first drawing that you gave us has, and I'm probably stealing her thunder there, locations of the water lines, and I assume that has changed somehow, or was that part of the, part of the infrastructure was why? You say infrastructure changes.
You have, I believe, in your hands, the most current engineering drawings for the infrastructure.
Okay.
Okay, so that is, those are prepared to be submitted to the EPA. I mean, that is ready to go as to be built.
And I think Jessica could speak to why this all developed regarding utilities.
Jessica, if you would go to the podium, there would be enough space for you at the table today.
And introduce yourself for the world.
I'm Jessica Dine. I work at the Engineering Public Works, and I'm the project and development manager. Andy Stone and I reviewed these, and I have some general comments about them. Andy's comments were the general alignment of the utilities is okay, but we have some questions and concerns about the easement, specifically the easement within the direction of the easement, that we would like to see the easement be able to match either into right-of-way or an existing easement, or matches the property lines better, so that we could allow for future connections.
Are you talking about the driveway easement or the utility easement?
Utility easement.
Can I say that again, I'm trying to follow you?
Okay, and I can show you.
Can you show me on this right here? We've extended this. We were asked to extend this so you could get, so this could come into the right-of-way?
Yes, and Andy Stone's comments, he would like additional, he would like to see this either match into an existing right-of-way or into another easement, or perhaps transition to meet the property line better to allow for future connections.
Just the easement, not the, just the easement, not the entire utility.
I was going to say, the last thing we want to do is tear up the.
No, no, no. This would just be to have, so the city can have an easement there in case we need to expand additional infrastructure in there.
Well, yeah, we were told that originally, and that's why we did that. If you wanted to, at some point, be more specific about exactly what kind of alignment you're talking about, we can incorporate that. But, you know, we were under that understanding that you wanted us to not just terminate that last man hole, but to allow for future connection if you wanted to. It's not a problem.
Other things that we would like to see is your onsite storm drainage plan.
I'm sorry, I can't speak louder?
Can you speak up?
Yes.
We would need to see your onsite storm drainage plan for the property.
We, I discussed that with Andy and et cetera in the field, and we've located where it is on Madison. And the idea is when they were going to bring up the sewer, we would extend that storm and have it parallel run out there. And then we would bring our stormwater into that.
Okay. We'll need to review the plan sheet for more details.
Okay.
And then the road access plan, which is a part of the utilities, but we'll need to review that.
The road access plan?
Yes. Which I know wasn't submitted as part of this, but.
We don't know what that is.
This is the first time we've heard any of these things, so it's interesting.
I think they're asking for a maintenance of traffic flow?
Oh, we were on how the, how they approach, how the driveway is going to access onto Madison.
Both driveways?
Right.
Would this just be a site plan?
That's on the site plan already. I mean, the driveways are called out on the site plan to the existing roadway that.
As long as the driveway access exists on the 2008 approved site plan hasn't changed. We could have Andy review that just to confirm it, but it should be fine. It was reviewed back in 2008. I'm sure for Andy, it's just not fresh in his mind.
That's probably all. So I'll make that note and take that back to Andy, but.
I had thought you were going to speak to the whole utility discussions that were carried on this summer, just to kind of confirm what they're indicating the developers were in. Met with Andy multiple times, and yes, the space is so limited that this is what's had to happen. You have to get, what, a 10-foot separation, according to EPA, between, and it just became a little too challenging, which is why this reconfiguration has occurred to align with what we're requiring in terms of the utilities, so.
Yeah, that is correct. I was present, Andy and I were present with Diversified Properties for those discussions, and there was a significant issue with where the layout for the older buildings were proposed, where they were encroaching further towards East State Street. There was not enough room to get all of the utility put into that section. And so after continuous discussions between them and Public Works, this was a proposal to bring it back so that they do have enough room to get their utilities installed as meets city code. But to do that, they had to push the buildings back, which is one of the reasons that the buildings now are smaller as far as from lengthwise.
They're smaller, and obviously, getting rid of that, the last building allows us not having to go around that tight corner there.
And that'll make a nice green space.
And it'll make a big green space.
That'll be nice.
All right, so what I'm understanding is that this is really just driven to allow for the utility easement. It isn't so much that you wanted to see attached buildings, which is, I mean, that's fine. I guess just explain that. And that's what I got from him.
We had, for purposes of discussion only, we had two different approvals previously, which were attached structures. It was upon our motivation to bring to the commission the detached concept, which we pursued to the end.
Had you known what you know now, you probably would have stuck with.
You can fill in the blanks. Had we known what we know now, fill that in.
I understand.
Again, the project has been significantly scrutinized for four years, and, you know, this change, we think, is a positive change for the project, for the outcome, and we're just trying to get to the next level with, hopefully, not, you know, we're not excited about starting at square one, I'll be candid. Okay? I'll just be candid about that. We just need recognition of what this change really means to the commission and the council, and then act accordingly.
Any comments from commissioners?
So really, the question is whether this is significant enough to actually start square one and continue, or just say the modified plan, your development is adequate, and as long as, well, the final plat is put together in accordance to what the Public Works wants. Is that what?
That's my understanding. Anyone else's take?
I assume, do they need a review to council again?
Mayor, if I may, just to make sure we're clear. Title 21 of Athens City Code subdivision regulations for planned unit developments, 210926, states that "A conceptual or fundamental change to the site plan shall be in accordance with the procedure outlined in the approval process." That's it.
210926?
Correct, very last sentence of that.
Okay, conceptual, yeah.
So in interest of moving this along, which means if we can get a vote today, then it can be presented through the council process, I would move to approve the modifications to submit to council with the, on the condition that the easement, storm drainage, and road access plan are reviewed and accepted.
Paula, would we need to approve it with a recommendation for a variance, because PUDs are supposed to be larger than two acres as well? That was initially one of the approvals, so, just in case.
Can I amend that to include any recommendation for variance because of the size?
I think so. I guess where my confusion, and I think we're all a little confused in a sense, is, I think it all has, a lot of it has to do with responsibility.
it all has, a lot of it has to do with responsibility. Who's responsibility for knowing that 10-foot easement was there when the site plan was originally conceived? Was it the city's responsibility? Was it AEP's responsibility, or was it the developer's responsibility?
I would just say that the utilities have been challenging on this project from the beginning. They really have. We've gone from tying in from East State, tying in off of Madison, and the developers have worked very closely with Engineering Public Works to get this finalized, so...
I, I guess, yeah, where I'm, I'm leaning, I don't see this as a conceptual or fundamental change to the project. If it's moving buildings closely together and back a little bit, I mean, I think it's still the same project, I mean, it's just was being altered due to that easement. In other words, if they were to move the row 10 feet, that would then qualify as a fundamental and perceptual change in this reading. Even if they weren't to move any of the buildings, but move their easement from the site plan, that would qualify as that, if we were to read it that way. So I, I guess I'm sort of, I don't know if I see it as a fundamental change.
Does this obviously, does it move it back closer to the houses that are owned above?
Excuse me?
Do, do these structures then move closer to the homes that are located above?
They're under homes above. No, the road exists, and the driveway's come off of there. It's a completely vegetated area, there's no houses, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I'm, I am very, I've been doing this 30 years, I'm very sensitive to topography, changing grade, and the realities of this type of construction, and that's what's driving some of this, 'cause I know when we get down and dirty into this, what I don't want to do is disturb this hillside. And I know what it takes to put utilities in, get the job done, in a manner that we're not going to disturb the, the vegetated area. The reality is, you're not even gonna see what we're talking about here from East State Street.
All right, I'm just talking in regards to that one house that's tucked up on the hill, back away from Madison. Yeah, that might, maybe it's, maybe it's further away than I thought.
It must be, yeah, there, you can't see anything.
Okay.
Saying they go farther back.
Okay, so what was the motion?
I've placed a motion, my motion, but, you know, Nicholas is throwing me a curveball.
I apologize.
That's quite all right. Planner, the question before the commission that Nicholas has brought in is, he does not, he is not viewing it as a conceptual change or a fundamental change. Trying to do this the best process.
Yeah, that is a good question. I would say conceptual or fundamental, maybe, it could be argued either way. Still the same amount of units, still the same, similar, still going to be condominiums, still going to be the same use, still the same amount of bedrooms, et cetera. Whether clustering buildings together as opposed to having them separated out, that's really the only change. Whether that's a conceptual or a fundamental change, I could be persuaded either way on it, I suppose. I, person, from a personal perspective, I don't think it's a significant change to what was initially proposed. I, I would say, at a minimum, we should probably have city council review it to make sure that city council's on the same page. It is still city council's responsibility to approve the final plat, and if council has not reviewed these changes prior to a final plat being brought forward to them, it may actually be encouraging the developers to do a lot of work and spending a lot of money on plans to only find out that city council views it as a conceptual or a fundamental change on their end. So, I don't see why, the planning commission, if you guys so choose, could vote to approve it today and refer it back to city council to review it. If city council wants to do it and, and suspend rules and do one ordinance on it or something, and then still have the requirements for a final plat, that would be their prerogative, but that would certainly make sense to me, just to at least make sure that all, anybody who has the authority to approve has at least reviewed the, these changes. If it was a change of, you know, moving a window around or something like that, I don't see where it would be, and have an impact that could not just be addressed at the final plat. That's me, though.
Paul, I'm sorry. Paul, do you and Paul feel as though this is an improvement? This plan is an improvement on the utility layout?
From the conversations with Andy, that he's had with the developers, yeah. I do think as far as getting the utilities installed in the proper manner, this should help it. Andy is going to be preparing a memo on this very shortly, so that everybody's clear on that. That would always, and that's always something that we probably will have to address utilities again at some point with this project, once it's all said and done as well. So, never know what's going on underneath until you actually tear it up.
All right, thank you for your input. Paul, would you reread your motion, 'cause it sounds like we'd still probably stand in all likelihood.
I make a motion that the planning commission approve and recommend to council the, this latest modification pending, with the conditions, and a variance, I'm gonna get this right, from the acreage size, that condition that the easement for the utility line, storm drainage plan, and, and road access is reviewed with Andy Stone, our city engineer and director of Public Works.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? All those opposed? All right, well, thank you, gentlemen, hopefully this is satisfied city's council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we finished our cases for the day, we can move on to communications.
Welcome back.
Our first communication on the agenda with, Shart, is Mike Smeltzer either an tenant or has he provided a letter to the commission? Okay, well, we will skip that item for now, and...
Wait a second, there are some people who want to speak.
Oh, sorry, I'm, my apologies. If you'd like to speak, once the table is cleared out, please let us step up, or you can use, choose to use the podium.
I'm gonna sit down.
That's fine, thank you. If you would state your name to the commission?
John Wharton.
Okay.
I am here today, I guess it was on your agenda, I was told, Mr. Smeltzer's request.
Yeah, we had just received news this morning that he was not gonna be a tenant, but he was in all likelihood to drop off a letter. We have not received that letter, so we don't really have...
I'm his letter.
Oh, you're, you're his letter?
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate it.
Yeah. Talking telegram here. Little history on, I guess, why I'm here. I apologize to Mr. Kishigie, I think it's been, starting in the early 90s, you've been on the planning commission since then, I think, where this is, actually, this topic has been addressed, this would be the fifth time, I think, the rezoning of the northern block of the Uptown area to conform with the rest of the Uptown area as a B2D. I brought it through the planning commission, or to the planning commission, just five years ago, maybe, I guess, four or five years ago, and so I'm pretty familiar with the pluses and the minuses, the differences between, or I was, B2D and B3. The downtown area, the Uptown area certainly has changed over the last, I guess, 20 or 30 years especially, whereas the northernmost block of Court Street has, in our opinion, become the most attractive block of Court Street. We have one vacancy, which is the Blue Gator. It's become a very, much of a retail type of area between Cornwall's Jewelry Store, moving up there 10 years ago, probably, and, and the Import House, and Court Street Collections, and other types, similar types of retail businesses. Obviously, Stevens has since moved into the Seven Sauces former location. And we rented some office space on a corner which is now occupied by Jeff Maddick. And then about three or four years ago, I was involved in selling, selling Mr. Smeltzer the office building that he has now turned into his office building, and done an extensive renovation. It used to be a law office on West State Street, and is now his financial planning office. If you've never been to it, I would encourage you to go look at it, it's the most beautiful office in, in the area, although Mr. Chaddix is very attractive as well. But, the, I guess, the impetus of our concern, there's advantages and disadvantages to being a B3, and there's advantages and disadvantages to being a B2D. The greatest advantage to the B2D, as far as development, or developers, is you are not required to provide parking for retail or commercial space. Nothing to do with residential, you still have to provide your parking for residential, but you don't have to provide parking for your retail or commercial space. As we try to find a tenant, or somebody to buy the Blue Gator building, depending upon the use of the building, that becomes an issue. To have to provide parking requires you to out, to go out and either get a lot within 250 feet to provide your parking, or get a variance. And variances, sometimes you get them, sometimes you don't, I can speak from experience. So, the last time I was the inspiration behind this, there was, I guess, a concern on some people's part that maybe somebody had visions of building the Trump Tower on the northern block of Court Street, and that, that isn't the case. And because of that, there was even the request made by council that the planning commission changed the height limitations in a B2D to match what it was in a B3, where they would reduce the allowable height of a building, which the planning commission did. Okay, so now you've made it, nobody can go up, okay? I guess there was concern also about the infrastructure, you know, will the, we have problems with the infrastructure, and if you, if we do this, it might cause more developing to occur, and we already have problems with our infrastructure. I find that laughable. I know you have an old tunnel that goes underneath the street, and that's a problem. That's a problem whether there's any development up there or not, okay? I talked to Andy Stone about this, and he said, if new development occurred, they'd have to obviously tap into properly the sanitary, the stormwater, the water, you know, all that would have to be done, and not dump into that tunnel. It will not further aggravate a problem that you have, okay?
Can I interrupt you, just for a moment? Have you spoken to the city council recently?
I try not to do that.
Well, I guess the, I guess the question I have is, the planning commission, if they voted four times to make this change, then what's a fifth time gonna do to persuade city council?
I guess, you know, I guess I would give that question back to you. We have a different...
I'm not on state.
Well, I guess, no, but I guess, I guess, no, what I'm saying is this, I don't know why, after you've four times, and it wasn't just planning commission, it wasn't...
No, I don't think it's, maybe Harry...
Harry's the only one, okay?
Sorry, you're the guilty one, then.
That's why I apologize to him, I knew he didn't want to hear this a fifth time. I guess, if I was on the planning commission, quite honestly, and I had recommended this four times, and council hadn't even voted on it, I'd be having discussions with city councils to, why are you ignoring us? They came, representatives of city council came to the Uptown Business Owners Association, the president of our, of our chamber is here, they twice came and asked, how do you feel about this? And they said, we're all for it, okay? We, we want this to happen. Our, I don't know whether it's a $200,000, $300,000 comprehensive plan that we paid for, Section 10.5 defines the Uptown area as Court Street, from President Street on the south to Carpenter Street on the north. You know, I, I don't understand why they haven't voted on it either, to be honest with you, okay? But I'm not the one to bring it to their attention, okay? I, I know we have a new plan now...
I guess what I'm saying is, we've brought it to their attention four times, because anytime that the planning commission votes...
Well, because city council asked Mr. Smeltzer to have planning commission revisit it again.
I don't understand that.
Did you know that? City council asked it to be brought to, brought back to the planning commission again. This has been like seven, eight months ago, okay? And unfortunately, Mr. Smeltzer had an out-of-trip, out-of, out-of-town trip planned today.
All right, that's fine, it has, yeah, I guess that's not what I'm getting, I mean, it's not the messenger is what I'm trying to say, so I don't know why, if, um...
You know, but it's...
Mr. Hold on, actually... Perhaps you might have a little more background from your experience on, or time on city council. Was it ever voted on by the planning commission during your time on the council? Yeah, I don't know.
I think, to tell you the truth, I don't think it was, but I know it's previous a couple of times. And again, a lot of it had to do with the, the scope of development there. The park and, commercial parking was a concern. I think the, the discussions, at one point, they were talking about trying to reestablish the distance from the parking garage, 500 foot, was it, radius? To reestablish that as a distance. I think Mr. Pearson, probably about three or four years, did a, an inventory of how many commercial lot parking spaces there were, and therefore how many could actually change over. And I, I know that's some of the concerns, but, I don't know. Why didn't it swing over?
A lot of it has to do with, okay, a lot of, okay, you mentioned the pros for B2T, what are the, what's the cons for B2D? You said there are pros and cons.
Yeah, you're, you're limited on the size of your signs, and, and when this was initial, when, I think maybe the third time it was brought to the planning commission, or the second time, the only two objections from any property owner on that block were...
Oh, yeah.
Kevin Goldsberry and Jack Stauffer.
Yes.
Okay, and Kevin was concerned because with his sign, it would, it would no longer comply in size, and, and that was a concern, okay? And, and Jack's concern was that the building that he owns that the barber shop was in would be limited on what uses could be, what tenants he could have. Is this coming back, okay? So those were, yeah, I see, oh, yeah.
Yeah, freestanding signs, I remember this now, and the, the business of having some mechanics in the front room where it could be seen from the window outside, is in a B2D, there's restriction on that.
And, and those two property owners are no longer opposed to this. When I brought it to the planning commission four or five years ago, we even had like 60% of the property owners had already signed a petition that we presented, where they were all in favor of it. You know, the sign, you know, see, it used to be that block of Court Street had car dealerships, gas stations, I mean, lots of them, milling, way back, if you look at the old pictures, lives, I mean, it was like, it wasn't anything like the rest of the downtown area, okay? And, and being a past president of the Uptown Business Owners Association, and being, trying to be involved in the betterment of our uptown area, I feel like we're almost a stepsister of that block, you know, we're not, we're not looked upon the same, we're not treated the same, we're being subjected to parking regulations that, that the rest of Court Street doesn't have. I mean, getting into this discussion as to, you know, changing the parking garage counting for 500 feet or less, or should we expand it, or whatever, that can be a whole nother discussion on our parking and the restrictions for residential parking, okay? You know, 'cause we've obviously made strides in the last couple of years of becoming a lot more bike-friendly, bike lines, bicycle lanes, and, and pedestrian-friendly, and speaking as a landlord now, okay? We, we're required, though, to have a parking space for every tenant within 80 yards of their bedroom, that's gotta be bigger than their bedroom, okay? Well, that just sort of encourages people having cars in the downtown area, okay? What we should be doing is discouraging them from having cars, and encouraging them to walk and bicycle, but that's a whole nother discussion, 'cause this really doesn't have any effect on that. This is simply saying that for retail and businesses, they're not required to have parking. Now, it does tie into that, because those of us... Now, it does tie into that, because those of us that have had to go out and create parking to satisfy our parking regulations for my offices, okay, for my businesses, that would then free up that parking, it could be used for residential. But my lots are in R3 zones.
Which parking are we specifically referring to?
Well, when I bought my building on Court Street, which was in 99 or 2000, there had been unfortunately a fire at 60 North High Street where a couple students died. And I bought that house from the owner, and I leveled it, and I created a nine-space parking lot. And so then I did restrict that to my building on Court Street, and that, by, you know, doing that, I was able to use an ugly brick building and renovate it and make it attractive, I think, okay?
So you're, for, I mean, the only parking I really can think of in that block is by Court Side mostly, so most of this, go ahead.
There is more on the other side. It was H&R Block side, there's some parking there off of Fern. You realize Cornell Jewelers has some parking as well.
Right, yeah, that's, I was thinking that.
Technically, Smeltzer has parking that he has to use for his business versus his residential, and half his building is residential. I forget, I guess we should actually go find that inventory. I haven't seen it in a couple of years, but I know there was a list that was made, and I believe at the time, and maybe I was on council at the time, but they were shocked at how many park spaces were up for. And again, the assumption, of course, they'll all turn into residential, but that's not, you know, that's assumed that somebody would want to give up convenient parking in front of their business or something like that. On the other hand, I am also aware, and this comes back to me in the discussion, is that there was also the concept that this would intensify, again, development in that area, and you have the North Side Neighborhood Association and members of the residents saying, saying this would only increase the noise, substantive noise and intensity of use going towards the Congress, North Congress area. So I'm aware that that was one of the issues that was bandied about as well.
Yeah, I think the difficult situation we find ourselves in is that we have a comprehensive plan now that wants intensifying uses and densities in areas, but since this discussion probably, I'm sure most of the votes on the part of the Planning Commission were prior to the comprehensive plan that specifically called that out.
Could be almost the same time.
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
And to address that concern, now that there's been the restriction on height, where can development occur? Okay, I mean, look at the block, where can development occur? You cannot go up, okay? Now, if Cornwall's wants to level their building and build a building there, then they have to provide residential parking, you know? All that parking's already been indeed restricted to the Court Side properties that's there, okay? What can we, where can we go up, okay? So where you could possibly come up with 120 bedrooms in that block, build on top of Historical Society, can't do that.
How about the facility next to Carpenter Hall that the photographer currently rents?
That's not in the zone.
That's not in the zone.
That's not in the zone.
It's really a very limited area that we're talking about here. We're talking about basically the buildings that, but courts, or that are on Court Street, from State Street to Carpenter, and extending to the west on State Street over to the church, okay, which encompasses Mr. Smeltzer's building. And, you know, then it goes over to the, on the east, over to, I think, to the Malika Golf, yeah, okay. Well, Paul can tell you.
It's in your packet, there's a map in there.
It's a very small area, okay?
I can have it in our packet.
No, we didn't get that one.
I think it's one of our previous packets.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, I think I did.
Well, one of the four other times it was here, okay? So I guess, and, you know, I mean, to talk about trying to find a reason to not count this block or treat this block the same as the rest of the uptown area, to come back to this theoretical noise issue from the North Side Neighborhood Association...
Sorry, we're getting our maps together here, Tony.
That's okay.
If I got it in this...
We've had several noise ordinances passed by City Council. That's been addressed, as far as what they can do. If there's actually a noise violation, the police have the power to cite. You know, there's, I mean, you know, students are going to cause noise, okay? And your most vocal concern, I think, the people that have been the most concerned about noise, you know, I guess you're going to have some noise. I tell you what, and I've said this before, what would be horrible is if you lived real close to the uptown area and it was dead silent at night, like in Lancaster, or Wellston, or Jackson, or Chillicothe. That would be horrible, where their downtowns are dead, okay? Or Columbus, okay? Which is what they're trying to fight, they want their downtown to be alive. I guess if you really wanted true peace and quiet, you need to be on a farm somewhere, okay? Not 100 yards from the uptown area.
You know, again, not to interfere, I just don't know what a fifth time's going to do. I have a, I mean, my feeling is people would probably vote for. I mean, the worst thing you want is for us to all of a sudden now vote against.
I guess, I guess...
And then it can't go to City Council. I would continue to pursue it at City Council where...
Well, but they've already asked Mr. Smeltzer to come back to the Planning Commission. Actually, it was, if I, and you can certainly reach out to her to find out, I think it was Christine.
Christine, who is in attendance today, I don't know if she's interested in speaking.
She was the one that said something to Mr. Smeltzer. I know he's been communicating with somebody on council, and they said, take it back to the Planning Commission. So that's what he did. He's the one that brought it back to you again. So, yeah, I agree with you. I think it's unfortunate that it has to be heard a fifth time, or acted upon a fifth time. I think that's unfortunate, because there certainly is better things to do with your time than hear this for five times.
Can I ask Christine, as long as she's in the audience, what the council's concerns were, that they're kicking this back to the Planning Commission?
There's issues about the fact that council is, a lot of people on council are new. You know, a lot of the people who are on it have never seen this proposal. Council's also uncomfortable, they like to act upon recommendations from the Planning Commission. I've tried bringing certain things before council, and they have said, we need recommendation so that they can act on it, and that's part of it.
But if the recommendations are already there...
But also the fact that it has, we had no planner, and that was my main concern, is that the four recommendations came from Planning Commission's without the input of our new planner, and that's, so that the issue with the increase in the density that's already occurred there, and it would be the most up-to-date because we've had building go on, and the recommendations from the planner, and so to bring it all up to the most current, because the other recommendations weren't, you know, didn't necessarily cover and look at what's already gone on there, also with some of the infrastructure development that went on with Carpenter and such. I don't necessarily think it's very good policy to look at something that's, you know, three or four years old and make policy on it. And I think that it would make sense for all the information to be updated and to be presented to council, because a lot of the members of council are new, since this last proposal went through from the Planning Commission. And, you know, I mean, we, I could try, I, one reason is, I talked to council members individually about this, and they said, many of them said, I'd like to hear what the Planning Commission has to say. So, I could try it again, and it may decide, they may say, we don't have enough information, and we feel uncomfortable about bringing it, so.
And I can assure you, that's the last thing that Mr. Smeltzer and I want to hear, is that you don't have enough information.
Mr. Lo, since you're the, do you have some thoughts?
This is what I've been waiting for.
If the Planning Commission would request a memo from me or something, I would certainly, I would be happy to give them a detailed recommendation. Offhand, my recommendation, yes, to have it rezoned as B2D. I do not see what the, I do not see enough negatives to it to persuade against that. I do think that, I guess my real opinion is, if you've got a parking deck that close, and you have on-street parking meters for commercial businesses, I don't, if a business does not want to provide parking for commercial purposes, I don't see why they should be required to. And that would go for Mr. Smeltzer or anybody else. I believe the Board of Zoning Appeals in 2003 awarded a variance for 40 parking spaces for Casa Nueva. I don't see how those 40 parking spaces variances have been of negative impact.
I don't see how that would be legal to do a variance for that.
What's that?
It doesn't seem like that would be, should be permitted for variance if it's specifically stated, not to, that seems like that was an opinion and not actual... So, I don't know if we need the memo so much as City Council needs to receive the memo.
Well, I can, like I said, I can give it to council, or I can give it to the Planning Commission, and they can, you guys can follow my lead, or not follow my lead and go forward with it.
I would say give it to us right now. We'll review the stuff, shoot it to council, and let them...
Right. Okay, so...
Well, because the thing that we're trying to stress is that, though the people's faces change of who's on the Planning Commission, we have to have a history, and, I mean, I know we're all different, but we, you know, there has to be a continuation with those four votes that they still...
What's your name?
My name's Nicholas, sorry.
Nicholas. My, I guess my question to you is this, it seems like you're reluctant to actually take a vote on this issue for the fifth time. Why? I mean, just like City Council's got new faces...
I feel like it doesn't sort of validate our previous votes, and it makes, it sort of waters down each time we do a vote on something.
But what I don't want to see have happen is, the letter of recommendation goes from Paul to you, you hand it to council, council turns around and says, yeah, but we still haven't heard from the Planning Commission. So what does it hurt to let the new members of the Planning Commission take a vote? Okay? What's it hurt? We certainly spent 30 minutes, you know, beating up something right before this, you know? Take five minutes beating this up, okay?
Well, like I said, I'm just, acting as chairperson, I'm reluctant to bring a vote as a motion, but any of the other commissioners are more than welcome to bring that motion.
I don't mind taking a vote on it, but I would prefer not to vote on it today and receive more information, because this is the first time then that this has been brought up to me since I've been sitting here.
So Mr. Lo will give you his recommendation, and you guys will discuss it, and then we'll wait to hear back from you then?
Absolutely.
Is that fair enough?
I think so.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, we're not under any timeline, we just, we would just like to see it continue to move forwards.
Just since night...
That's fine, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
May I make a suggestion as well?
Please.
Since John is our zoning director, he may want to, I will work with John as well to get the, to get his two cents on whether this should be rezoned as well. If we're talking about rezonings, it should not just be the planner discussing that, it should probably be our zoning enforcers.
Okay. Fair enough.
Agreed.
Agreed. All right. Thank you, John Moore. Next item of communication is a request from City Council, another one, to amend or remove section prohibiting, section of code prohibiting vegetable gardening. And we do have a document on that very such change. Did City Council provide this document, or?
A citizen did. There's a group, CFI, and some other interested parties. I think the drafts actually, there's actually two drafts you can see in place there. One was sent directly to me, because there was a conversation I had with somebody, believe it or not, at the farmers market. Didn't change much from the other draft concerning gardening.
Okay, I'll read the second draft aloud then. It's a proposal to amend the Athens City Code sections, to amend 240401, R1 residential zone, one family, as follows. C, conditionally permitted uses, the following uses shall be permitted only if expressly authorized by the Board of Zoning Appeals. Hereafter referred to as BZA in accordance with provisions of this code. Item three, they would remove gardening and capitalize domestic animals, and also remove the raising of vegetables, fruits, or flowers, so that would just pertain to domestic animals. So domestic animals, the keeping of domestic animals, not for sale of property. Item four would be commercial gardening, the raising of vegetables, fruits, or flowers for sale. Then, following suit would be 230402 for R2 residential zone, 230403 for R3 residential zone. These don't need to be remended because they've referenced that 230401 for exclusion and retain all their conditions. They go on to say that this would allow non-commercial gardening to be considered an implied permitted accessory use, which I'm not sure if it's implied if it's not stated. I thought we already had that discussion once in commission, that if it's, it's not allowed if it's not permitted, if it's not listed.
I always said if it wasn't stated, it was allowed.
Well, remember, this issue, item came up, I'm not sure if RJ, you were on here, but about homeless shelters not being a permitted use because it was never listed as such a use. So I don't know if that would be of the same sort of...
Homeless shelters are, but they are called out in our code. As, I can never say that word.
I thought it was...
Yeah.
Something of that nature.
What was it again? You don't remember offhand?
I don't have it up right here. Give me the code.
We're going to leave nothing unanswered today.
Okay. So you want a section you want to talk about?
I'm not sure which, I think it would have been, I can't, maybe, Paul, do you remember where this came up? I thought it was homeless shelters, maybe I'm wrong, or it was hostels. I thought, it was hostels.
Hostels, I believe.
Yeah.
Oh, wow, that was a while ago.
It was, but that's where this discussion came from of what, I thought it was...
It was identified as a...
As a use, so therefore I thought it was, my argument was, I thought it was allowed, but I thought legally you have to define it if it's a permitted use.
Yeah, I'd have to check our minutes on that, that doesn't sound familiar.
Yeah, institutions.
So homeless shelters are allowed if any...
Yeah, basically that's supposed to be, you pronounce it, Elio...
No.
Elio Mosnarian institutions.
Harry knows what it is.
What is it again?
Homeless shelters.
Yeah, Elio Mosnarian?
Elio Mosnarian, okay, yes. And, okay.
So I guess, yeah, that, all right, let me continue, and we'll go back to that. It was hostels is what the, where that came from. Speaking of the history of the Planning Commission, number two was to, item for them was to retain consistency across court sections by amending 910, or section 9.10.02 as follows, to add stronger language to address untended yards. Noxious weeds, grass to be cut. Every owner responsible for maintenance of any lot or land within the city shall be required to cut all noxious weeds. They would remove grass or other types of vegetation, other than trees or shrubs, and grass would be in addition. Growing or being upon the lots of land as aforesaid by cutting to a height not over eight inches any growth of such noxious weeds, removing grass or other vegetation other than trees or shrubs other than such height or reaching maturity, and to remove line. And then adding to that, where grass over such height is hereby declared a nuisance. Garden and landscape plantings that are maintained and trimmed as necessary to prevent overgrowth and blight are not subject to the eight-inch height requirement.
Okay, well, okay, I can see why they pair it together, because the concept is, you could have a real scraggly garden...
Right.
Or a lot of weeds and noxious plants and say, this is my garden. On the other hand, I will point out that section 91002 is actually outside zoning code, and council can do this without our say-so or recommendation.
Right, zoning code is just title 24. Forty-one, we also get a memo.
Okay, and the thrust of this is to, again, it's coming from the Community Foods Initiative. I think the conversation was, I think, with Kent Butler at one point, to concerning home gardening, domestic gardening, and stuff like that. I gave you copy, you should have copies of the 1992 Athens City Code, it's the one scribbled up with all these little pieces in there. I will point out the first, second column under R1, bullet number four, agricultural nurseries. This was deleted in 90, somewhere late 90s, because it really was talking about nurseries and greenhouses and general farming, including, not including commercial, provide they are on a tract not less than five acres. At that point, they were saying there aren't enough five-acre plots to worry about. On the other side, though, the second paragraph down, or rather, the first paragraph down, gardening and farm animals, this was the actual section for the non-commercial use. So you can see where both sections were kind of changed and modified to what we have presently.
All right, she moved over to, and this, and it was ninety-two already a permitted use, or was it conditional use at that point?
It was a permitted accessory use.
Okay.
As gardening at that time, I believe. Is that what it says? Yes, it was.
Yeah, that's what I, okay.
So you can see where it shifted it down a little bit to make it conditional where it required zoning board appeals. And again, if you, if you look at all this scribbling, that's when ours on zoning board appeals, so I was aware of some of this stuff. But we really never had that as a problem on zoning board appeals in terms of gardening. I think where the, the conditions, the, the call that they're making, the, the draftees of this amendment, is that they don't want to require somebody to say, "I want a garden, and I have to go to zoning board appeals to do this."
Right.
And again, it comes down to, the, the commercial part was amended to put in a second draft, because I was saying, okay, how do you, how do you prevent commercial gardening from taking place in our zone? And once, the counterargument, of course, is, commercial gardening is commercial, and therefore it's a business, and in our zone you can't have it. So this is trying to bridge both arguments along the way.
Okay.
And again, it comes along with the, the push to being, having a sustainable city or transition cities with, has, you know, resource of, of both food, you know, and where, where our food comes from, I guess. That's, that's the conversation I've had with citizens about this. I don't know what else I could add.
No, I don't, I don't know if there, I guess I would see, my recommendation would be to bring, again, it's going back to the future and putting it back as a permitted accessory use, like in nineteen ninety-two, but with gar, I guess extracting the gardening part and adding in, let's go, real quick. So nine, item of the permitted accessory uses that would be gardening, the gardening, the raising of fruit, or of vegetables or fruits for the use of personal enjoyment of residence and premises, and not for commercial purposes, would need to be, I would think it would need to be in the permitted accessory uses, and not just pulled out of the conditional.
Okay.
If this were to be accepted, I would, I would think you'd want to have that explicitly stated. And again, maybe I'm wrong, and maybe there is a reading that it's implied, but I don't think so.
I would assume not, but just because we.
Based on our past discussion, someone could tell me otherwise, and I'll be, I'll be total agreement with that.
Yeah, I hate to throw a new wrinkle into it, and I mentioned it to the mayor, that the remaining part, then, would be domestic animals, the keeping of domestic animals not for sale on a property. Basically, you'd have to have, to go to BZA to own a dog in an R1.
Yeah.
I, I, I mean, that's, that part.
It's absolutely true, though.
That's how it's written today.
That's how it's written already. And I think if we're gonna do this, just take care of the whole thing at once, and maybe we work on rewriting something and putting it back in under permitted uses, and rewrite it and go from there, in regards to gardens and domestic animals.
Hmm, very good point.
I would have a concern, too, about the commercial aspects, because I think that brings some different factors in, as far as like, when commercial, does that mean I could come into somebody's, onto somebody's property, basically drive up in an R1 and make a transaction right there, in which case you're talking about traffic that's coming in and dealing on a commercial basis with the, with the gardening that somebody's doing. The other thing, just out of, would the gardening be restricted to backyards or fronts of the property? And I ask that in regards to fencing, because if you're having a garden, and you have deer, raccoon, whatever, coming in, you want protection for your garden, are people with this going to ask, basically, an amendment on, on fencing in the front yard?
That's already happening, and that was one of the things that I had, and I was gonna discuss, is the R1 areas and the outlying areas that do have front yards and fences already up.
Right.
That, obviously.
Yeah, I mean, not.
Out of town, a little different than in-city, as far as the front yard fences.
But I've had experience with neighbors across the street, well, not in Athens, but in another community, where basically they began to operate commercial activity out of their home that required customers to come to their property and make the transaction. And you had a lot of, of increased traffic on that street, and that would be a concern that I would have.
I think there are the sections in code that prohibit businesses in R1 zones. I mean, you can have professional businesses of some sort.
Right.
You can have home businesses.
Right.
Provided they take only a certain amount of square footage. I think.
But as long as this is consistent with that.
Yeah, so is the argument, in a way, should, should it be made that you can't, in an R1, there should be, why, why do we even have the commercial gardening as a conditionally permitted, if, if the R1 zone explicitly states you can't have a commercial?
Right, if you're just talking about self-sustainment, you know, domestic gardening for your own pleasure, you know, that's fine. But, you know, I have, again, the reservation about the commercial aspect.
Okay, again, by referring to the old ninety-two law.
I see, yeah, it was.
We're kind of muddling it, because really, what the thrust of this amendment is to get, get it out of the, the area that you, every gardener who has a guard, backyard garden has to go in front of zoning board appeals to get a garden going.
Right.
The next question, of course, when does it, you know, if it goes into commercial-grade gardening, then in theory, the, the way the proponents of this order, this change wants, that would kick in your commercial, you're running a business, have an R1 zone, therefore that's prohibited. And you'd have to get a variance for that of some sort.
Right.
I mean, that's what it's stating, indicating, it's saying, these would only be allowed, the dog that we all have, or commercial gardening if they got the variance from.
Right. Well, it's, it's, it's almost the other way, and then we almost really need the gardening and the permitted uses, and then there shouldn't even be any mention of the, of the commercial as a variance thing, as a variance option.
And I, I just bring that up in terms of giving the BZA, you know, added, I don't know.
Guidance.
Guidance in the, in the issue.
Well, I think it needs some work. I don't know if we want to, I guess, is there anyone on council that wants to try to, or, council, commission, I apologize, that would want to, I know council doesn't want to take anything, but would want to work on trying to adapt this to what we see, or does it go back to maybe?
I'll go back to the, the original.
Seems like they're interested, I guess.
Yes, I, I, I've had discussions with the, with the people who wrote this up on many occasions. Some of you probably know some of the people, like, I think Rhonda Clark, CFI.
Okay.
As well as Kent Butler, who wrote this up. Again, I think the alternative, as you say, is to move the section into the permitted accessory uses, and just, and that's one way to avoid it. We could take the old wordage, we can take the new wordage, commercial can be in and out, provided we're aware of, and again, the commercial part, I think, is good because there will come a question where somebody's saying, "Okay, I've got a garden." There have been cases where somebody has a garden, and they end up, they're at the farmer's market in a booth, and it's like, okay, now they're commercial.
Right.
Even though they're not selling on a property, they're, they're now growing production level crops.
And that's something that the BZA would probably be made aware of, and that maybe would help their decision.
I'll, I'll try getting back to these people before the next meeting, guarantees. That's a task for me. And again, the other part is to look at the noxious weed section, too, and make sure we have some kind of, you know, this, they're trying to do is, of course, you had occasions, if, if you look at, I think, the minutes from the packet from the B2D section there, which I, I somehow don't have. There's a section of minutes in there, that they discussed the fact that there were people being cited for sunflowers in their front yard, because it was over eight inches.
Right.
Okay, so that's one of the issues you have there, is that we want to put some kind of, you know, there's a push also to get away from lawn, lawns that require lawnmowers.
Right.
I can see where they start talking about that, but then it becomes, you know, that word blight in there is going to be one of the problems right there.
It's very, very subjective.
Yes.
Is wild, is wild grass a plant or a noxious weed?
I've had people call up and say the bamboo is, is a grass technically, and therefore should be no longer than, higher than eight inches. And we have some good stands of bamboo in this town. So the question arises is what, you know, when does that fall into?
Fraud, hell of a surprise. I remember that discussion being at a, a former city I, I lived in where bamboo was qualified as a grass, and then the neighbor went out and cut everything razor-sharp. After that, the city no longer said, "It's fine, grow it up."
Little points on it.
I, I could see some, see some residents, unfortunately, the same guy would do that.
Mayor, would also garden location be in your discussions as well?
Or at least how gardens are treated differently in a front yard as they would be in a back yard.
I can bring that up. I don't think they were looking at that, they, they mostly look at, where this is coming from is where the sunshine is for most of these people. Okay, locations in terms of setback, okay.
Yeah, I, I think most of us would be, oh, I don't know, I, I know personally, I'd be fine if it's in front or the back, but again, it, it has to do with, then, well, you might not be able to have a fence in the front, or that sort of thing, but.
Yeah, I don't see why they should get an exemption on a fence, and somebody who's not planting a garden still has to.
People have come for variances on fences to the BZA, so technically, if they were trying to get a, a front garden in the front, which they're allowed to have, and then they want to fence, then they might have to go to BZA on that. And then the question, of course, fencing usually has to, a lot of times fencing has to do with actually line-of-sight issues with the, with the road. I think that's one reason why you see a lot of fence restrictions on there.
Right, but if somebody's also using just like cheap wire.
Oh, yeah.
And stringing it around the yard.
Electric fence, maybe, too?
Electric fence, you never know.
Somebody uses bob wire.
Chicken, chicken wire, whatever.
We really don't have, to my knowledge, any, I think that was brought up during the comprehensive plan many years ago, is that we should have some kind of fenced legislation in place. Having sat on the steering committee for the comprehensive plan, because right now we have no difference between a pressure-treated fence, a cyclone fence, or bob wire, or electric, you know, a fence is a fence is a fence. And that, there's no real, to my knowledge, there's no criteria within the code at this point.
And I agree with that, we need to do something on that.
Yeah, so that's another project for us eventually as well.
Yeah.
You want to take that on?
Sure.
Looking for work?
Absolutely.
Looking for volunteers, myself.
Okay, well, if you would send that forward, and maybe Shark could copy you on those minutes, and that would, you don't need to do as much talking.
Okay.
Minutes can do.
Talking for him.
Talking for him. Appreciate that. Do, if we have no other communications, any further discussion from any one of the communications? Jenna. Okay, quickly, meetings, or any report from the city planner or director?
Quickly?
Quick. You know, usually you're quick, I knew today you were gonna have a poll. It's been like, it's been two months since.
I will try to keep it short. I do have just a few things. I don't, did you guys have this yet, the planning commissioners?
I think we have one, I didn't have.
I don't know if that's an update.
It looks updated.
Just so you guys have it.
Thank you.
And then I do have, for, for Nicholas, RJ, and Harry, I have copies of the new flood plane regulations, title twenty-five, with, and for the mayor and the state director, I just have a brief memo summarizing the changes that have been made to the flood plane regulations, so that everybody is aware of what they are. The Planning Commission has an entity, does not have oversight over the flood plane regulations, but I did, since the five of you do make significant decisions on land use practices and development, that you guys are just aware of these changes and how they could impact developments, how they impact neighborhoods, communities, et cetera. There are, if you look at the bottom, it says there's key changes to title twenty-five, and then I've described each one of those. The main changes are in relation to compensatory storage in our twenty- and fifty-year flood planes, which we do have mapped and certified by an engineer. Those require that we cannot import fill dirt into the twenty- and the fifty-year flood planes without what's called compensatory storage, which means if you bring dirt in to fill it up, then you have to remove dirt from somewhere else to make up for any changes in flows and flooding, so that you're not basically pushing flooding issues out on your neighbors' properties. Pretty much standard stuff on that.
Hey, how does that, real quickly, how does that work? Is, do you have to do that within your own lot, or could you do it elsewhere along the path?
What it says is, in the twenty-year, the volume shall be offset by providing an equal or greater volume of permanent flood storage by excavation or other compensatory measures at a hydraulically connected site, which is preferably two, adjacent to.
Okay.
Or on the opposite side of the stream, across from the development area.
Okay.
So the key is that it's hydraulically connected.
Okay.
So there is some, there is some room in there. There's also other solutions and better practices for development and for construction that don't require the importation of fill. You can build, you can elevate using stilts and have parking underneath your building. We've seen, there's a property on Mill Street that has done that, three-unit rental property, where they have parking underneath. That would be an acceptable practice.
Okay.
That meets these requirements. The other major change is with the definition of substantial improvement. Not to get into it too much, but this is, this impacts any building that was built in Athens in our flood plain prior to March of nineteen eighty, which is when the original flood, flood maps were provided by FEMA to the city of Athens. Those properties are grandfathered in, most of them are not above the base flood elevation for a one-hundred year flood. So if a, if a flood hits, those properties are gonna have significant damage to them as part of the requirement. Also, when, if you're doing improvements to a property like that, FEMA's requirement is that if you're doing an improvement that, that hits fifty percent of that building's value, in order to get a permit to develop in that flood plain, you must bring the building up to, up to modern standards for the flood elevations. They do allow you to do, if you're doing improvements at fif, less than fifty percent, you are allowed to do that. Our regulations allow you to, to do fifty percent every five years. So you can't come to me today and say, "I've got a building worth a hundred thousand, it was built in nineteen sixty, I'm gonna do fifty thousand dollars worth of improvements to it, but I'm not gonna bring it up to elevation," so now you've got a building worth a hundred fifty thousand. And then in two thousand and ten, come to me and say, "You're gonna do seventy-five thousand dollars worth of improvements," and still basically not bring it into conformance. And so that's been addressed in the new flood regulations. And then the final key change is in relation to critical facilities can, are prohibited in the twenty-year flood plain, and existing critical facilities within the twenty-year are allowed to, to have standard maintenance necessary to continue their operations. So that would address something like, you know, hospitals, police, fire, emergency, anything like that, Red Cross shelters, something like that, would not be able to be built in the twenty-year flood plain. And that's just sound management, to make sure that the critical facilities that we would need in a flooding event are not actually flooded out, so they cannot provide those services to us. Yes?
I assume that eventually, if it isn't already, the, the maps for twenty and fifty and a hundred, I know the hundreds on the GIS, will the twenty and fifties end up at there as well?
We are waiting, yeah, we, we will be putting those up on the city GIS website.
Okay.
We do not actually have the new one hundred and five hundred up on the GIS website. We do have that, we have maps available for people to review online as PDFs, but they have not been provided to us, especially that five hundred year, so that we can get that information out, because they, the official date for the new maps is not until December. So we don't have those up yet, but they are coming.
Thanks.
Yeah, and as well as the twenty and the fifty. And we have elevations, elevation lines for the twenty and the fifty, that we will be putting those up as well. So, other than that exciting piece of news, I did have, just, I wanted to give you guys a brief that the bicycle and pedestrian plan is coming along very well. We did have a public meeting on it about two weeks ago, seventy people, I believe, came for that public meeting. We had incredible amount of data that was collected, and points of view that were extremely helpful. We will have a follow-up preliminary plan presentation, I believe, on November twelfth at seven PM at the community center. I'll probably be talking about that in about a month or so, or in a couple of weeks with you guys, just to give you more detail on it. The, Andy Stone met with Bart Kessler, who is the developer for the laundromat project on North Carpenter Street, or North Lancaster, whichever. He met with him, and they have worked out a arrangement for the access concern that the Planning Commission gave them on their Title Forty-One. That was one of the requirements to actually begin the project, was that they meet with Andy Stone and work out an access management plan. Andy has worked that, that out with them. He will be following up shortly to the Planning Commission with more detail on that, so. And we do have a few Title Forty-One projects that will be coming before the Planning Commission in the next month. Likely at least one at the twenty-first. Tony Farian, Castle Brook Properties, I do have a copy of site plans for all of you that I'll give you at the end of the meeting. So, that's it.
Any questions for the plan? All right, thank you. John, did you have any report?
I'm just gonna let you know, about a month ago, I met with the State of Ohio Department of Industrial.
of Industrial Compliance, sat down with the executive secretary of the Board of Building Standards, administrative assistant of code development, and the supervisor of plans examining. Talked to them about our fire suppression versus fire separation regs and what we can do. We've had some Title 41 projects that we thought about trying to require them to put fire suppression in. Finding out that we probably cannot really require that, it is a conflict of the building code, even though it is coming from the chief, it is more stricter, it is still in conflict with the code, so therefore we cannot really enforce that. But what we are able to do is start looking at duplexes and triplexes in a little different way through our department, if, on separation. And it's kind of lengthy as to details of that, but I think this will suffice in a lot of ways of what we were trying to accomplish with the spreading of fire. And I have sat down with a number of the architectural firms in town already and discussed with them what we're going to do and require upon submittal to see that that separation is there. And even though we're not a required, or authorized building department yet, the state does say we do have the authorization to require those submittals to prove that they are separated.
Okay.
Because if they are not separated, then they can be classified as a commercial structure, six people or more, and therefore having to go through state building permit process.
That's great. That's good news.
And then two other things, both in regards to signs, maybe you don't want to hear, the sandwich board situation uptown, passed out the flyers last Friday, or week ago Friday, we had 18 sandwich boards on Court Street that, to my knowledge, every one of them has taken them in, supposed to have, and are, as of right now, complying with what we've requested. And then the other issue, which I don't know exactly which way we pursue, maybe we have to write something up, is the one section in our code with the temporary signs in the B3 district primarily for strip malls. We've got a concern that we're coming across in our office with people coming in wanting temporary signs out on East State Street, for example. On a strip mall, if there's eight businesses in there, if a person comes in and wants to apply for temporary signs, how many can they have? Basically, it's to the point where Market on East State could have 200 temporary signs out front, or if, somehow we got to put a number on this and give a control, and maybe a maximum number of temporary signs that's allowed by one tenant within a building, something to that effect.
Okay, again, if it's, if my memory is correct, and I'd have to go back and look at this type of stuff, a sign, temporary sign can be no larger or bigger than the side, the full-size sign.
Correct.
Okay, so you're, what you're asking is whether a tenant of a build, a mall can actually have an individual sign.
Well, we'll say the sign was two by two, that's a four-foot, four-square-foot sign. They can have 25 of those signs. Is it per tenant, or is it going to be per the whole building, since the building has multiple tenants? And if it's for the, each tenant, if there's eight tenants in it, you're going to have 200 signs there, which obviously none of us want. So, I'm trying to think of a way to, maybe we put in the maximum number of signs per tenant on a, in those uses. Right now, it's pretty vague as to what we can do. We've got one right now that's.
Okay, in theory, though, let's say I'm looking, okay, Market, Market on State Street, for instance, that has one large sign, and it's got all the tenants listed on that sign.
Mm-hmm.
And really, that's all they can have. They can have, in theory, this.
They can have temporary signs as well.
One large temporary, one temporary sign?
Other than, including the freestanding sign, which they've got, they could also have temporary sign.
But that would be that one entity, the one shopping mall?
Okay, as a premise, the entire premise, which then, correct, it would be a total of 100 square feet in that situation, divide that by four square feet. I know this is kind of.
I think we had a little bit of this discussion when we were talking about real estate signs. I think the classic is the one, College Apartments, I think it is, by Hungry Howie's there, has at least four or five, it's condominiums. It's got four or five real estate signs stuck in the front of the building, because every condominium is a house unto its own. And so that, we're seeing it on that side too, I think, so maybe it's something we have to look at.
Something I want to bring up and think about.
Does somebody like College Park have a homeowners association?
Probably do.
Because, I mean, can you treat that kind of a situation much than?
It's College Park, that one there?
Yeah, as much as you would the mall, where basically you have one representative, if you've got for, you know, then it has to come through the homeowners association. I mean, it's, University Commons is similar in nature as far as being able to purchase, and they don't seem to have that problem.
No.
And they, basically, they deal through the one Realtor that works out of University Commons. So, you know, maybe is the answer is to the homeowners association of any establishment residents like that, is to put them in control of, you know, the signage.
And this includes business as well.
Yeah, I guess it would encourage, either if you're going to be a mall, you have to act as one, one sort of identity, and if you don't like it that way, then you would try to go away from the mall and be a sort of your own sort of persona or something like that. Now, what I, what I'm not quite sure is, who applies for temporary sign? Is it the, like, if you're, is it the tenant or the person that owns the property?
Tenant.
So then it's, yeah, so a bunch of individual tenants could apply for the sign, but we can only give them one. So who, you know, is it the first one out of the gate gets the temporary sign, or, you know, I mean, that's where, I don't know if it really is the tenant, or shouldn't it be the owner?
That's why I said, somehow they would need to look at that on that part.
Okay.
Okay. All right, that's a good one. Anything else, John?
No.
All right. Well, maybe when we're in more giving spirit around the holidays, we bring up the sign. Or this is.
Okay.
Next opportunity for citizens to speak, I don't think there's anyone that has lasted the meeting for that. Announcements and other business first, next meeting is October 21st at noon. Any other items?
I believe the city council talked about having a public hearing next, not next Monday, but Monday after, which would be the 19th, I think. Concerning, when we talk about the changes of that, the letter changing between B2 to B2, B3 to B2, they are going to have a public hearing on that before the regular session of city council.
Okay.
So that would be at 7:00. And I just want to relay it, because it does relate to what we're doing.
Absolutely.
And we just looked at it as a kind of a typo, but.
Right.
Other than that, nothing else.
Okay. RJ?
No.
DJ? Okay. Disposition of the minutes from last week, or last week, I should say.
July.
Two months ago.
I'm moving to second minutes.
Second.
Who's in favor?
I.
Anyone opposed?
I would like to say a comment. I would like to see, I'm looking at my notes from the July 15th meeting last time, and there was quite a bit more detail that was provided, particularly in the planner's report. I guess I'd just like, as a person, a little bit more additional. Not to make it too cumbersome, but he actually identified some of the highest volume for the pet and bike plan areas, and I just didn't see it related to the minutes.
Yeah, I mean, and the other thing is, if you had anything, you know, if you had on the reports, if something was prepared, you know, as well, that would be of use to the commission, you could always submit that as well, and that could be part of the minutes. But otherwise, you know, it could just be something that Shark can cover, so. Very good. All right, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, everyone. All right. Any opposed? Thank you.
Ethical one?
That heater thing back there.
It's noisy?
Oh, yeah, I couldn't hear anything.
Yeah, I think it's an air intake.
Yeah, well, I sat in the back row and it was a bad idea, I guess.
Okay.
I think, Johnny, you have to sit anywhere up here.
You can move that.
Okay, well, at least two seats. Either one.
So I thought a green mayor like you would take the stairs and so it would be elegant.
I was going to, but I wanted to see what these.
A green mayor, what do you mean, is that green anyway?
Let me hold my hand.
For a while. Oh, you mean ecologically green.
Sometimes I do, sometimes I don't. Depends on how I feel.
Figured I was gonna use it anyway, right? You weren't aware.
I wanted to actually check out your tie. I don't know how many Looney Tune ties you have. I mean, you must have a whole hundreds of them. I never see the same one twice.
I don't know that I, I mean, I probably have upwards of a hundred ties. They're not all Looney Tunes, but a good portion of them are. So it's time for Halloween ties here, isn't it?
Yeah, it is. Do you have a Looney Tune Halloween tie?
Oh, yes.
I figure as much.
We've got five Halloween ties, four or five.
I don't think I have any Halloween ties.
Oh, my goodness. See, now, it used to be a competition between me and Rick Abel at Holiday Time.
Oh, really?
He had holiday ties that he would wear.
Holiday ties, okay. Those ties are bind. Good afternoon. This is Mayor's press conference. It's October 7th, a little bit after 2:00. I'm going to start off the press conference with a presentation with Captain Pyle, the Athens Police Department, who has some information he may want to relay.
As most of you are aware, our department received a call this morning at 10:43 of an armed robbery that took place at Cold Stone Creamery on North Court Street. After receiving the call, quite literally, our officers were on scene within seconds because the crime scene is just a few feet from the back door of the police department. Our officer scoured the area for about an hour after the incident, looking for a suspect. It was described as a six-foot-tall male, about 170 pounds, with a buzz haircut, goatee, wearing a white t-shirt and gray either sweatpants or some kind of loose baggy pants. We did not locate the suspect. We have two investigators working the incident right now. Don't have a lot of information beyond what I've just given you, but I will take any questions that you have.
Questions?
You do not have any suspect in mind at this point?
Uh, I don't.
Given any name of any kind?
We haven't named a suspect, but I would not describe that as accurate to say we don't have suspects.
Was there any sort of security camera in the premises?
We have security cameras pretty much all around the alley area, and we have looked through those already, and that is part of the investigation that's ongoing.
And you saw the, you saw a suspect of this description on those tapes, or?
Um, no, that would not be an accurate statement.
Heard that he may have escaped through the back door of Cold Stone. Is that true?
Yes.
Do you have any information that he may have been, had an accomplice or somebody drove him away from the area or anything like that?
No.
Did you have some reason to think he had gone to the parking garage because it seemed like he had a concentration officers there at one point?
Yes, the victim, the employee at the, at the business, had indicated that he thought he may have fled in that direction. So, based on nothing else, other than that, we flooded the parking garage with officers. And we have also reviewed the video surveillance tapes in that area as well.
You said armed robbery. Is this a knife, gun? Any information to that?
Small cali, well, I'm sorry, not small caliber, a small-framed pistol is what was described as being used.
Did he allegedly brand it, or did he have it on him, or use it in the defense?
Yeah, he brandished the weapon.
Did he make any sort of threats? I mean, any sort of verbal threats, you know, towards the victim?
Not to my knowledge, although, you know, brandishing a weapon is a serious enough threat.
Was, was he wearing a mask or anything?
Do we know how much he got away with? How much money?
Um, yeah, but I won't divulge that right now. But it's a very specific amount of money. And then we have pinpointed the amount, but I'm not going to divulge it now because I might jeopardize what our investigators are doing right now, so.
Did he ask for a specific amount of money?
No.
Would you term it a large amount of money?
No.
Any other questions? If they need to, if there's any information, they have a contact number, I'd say?
Yeah, you know, if you have follow-up, there probably won't be any more information today, probably not until lunchtime tomorrow, will we consider releasing further information. That gives our investigators some time to work the case. And so if you want to contact the department, you can ask for me tomorrow, probably around noon or afternoon, would be a good time. And of course, if there's any breaks, we'll release that information via the normal processes, so.
Were there any customers in the restaurant?
No.
How many employees?
One.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Ken. Oh, go ahead.
He did speak to the clerk?
Yes.
Did, any kind of accent or anything?
Uh, nothing that's real solid right now.
And do you have anybody who has saw him come out of the store, other than the employees saying where he went?
Not, not yet. I want to add, which you just reminded me of that. Our department, as a course of responding to this, requested through the 911 Emergency Communications System, a code red broadcast. And after we did that, and a code red broadcast is essentially an automatic dialer system that Athens County uses to dial a predetermined geographical location on all the phones registered in that area. We put out a description of the suspect and what he was wanted for, et cetera. And those, dialed about 2,000 phones in the geographical area this morning. Very handy for us as a response mechanism to have that kind of ability. And I thank the 911 Emergency Communications Office for putting that out for us. But it did generate a lot of follow-up phone calls. We hope to have phone calls, you know, indicating where people might have seen the suspect flee to, or that kind of thing. But actually, the phone calls we got were of the type where people were questioning this code red. What does that mean? Is this legitimate? Is this a hoax? That kind of thing. So apparently, there are still quite a few people out there that aren't aware that in our region, we have those kind of capabilities. So I want to assure people, if they received a phone message on their answering machine, or if they even answered the phone and didn't understand that phone call, that was done at our request as a response aid for our officers. And they're likely to get those kinds of messages again. So it's important to know that when they get a phone call that indicates a code red alert. Code red is the company that our emergency management agency uses, or our emergency communications system uses. So code red in itself has no, that moniker has no meaning as far as a heightened alert or heightened state of alert. It is simply the company that handles the messaging system for us in that regard. People may actually get those kinds of messages during, you know, during the evening or early hours of the morning, when we have a similar instance, an armed robbery, or a shooting or something like that. Hopefully, we will not have that kind of situation, but should we, we may contemplate using it. So I'd like to remind people in our community that that ability is out there, and if they do receive that, that it is legitimate.
Is that something that people sign up for, or it's just sort of a default setting?
Yeah. I'm not entirely certain how landlines are handled, and that question would be better directed to Doug Bentley, director of, 911 director. But as far as cell phones, it does include cell phones, but those cell phones are registered for people that want to receive those types of alerts. For instance, we have a large transient population through the university student group. You know, a lot of students from out of state, from within state and other communities like Cleveland, Cincinnati, Columbus, that kind of thing. And if they want to receive those alerts, they simply have to register their cellphone. If they don't, they won't receive them because those cell phones won't be, they'll be registered in the Cleveland area, so they won't be captured in that geographic location. But if they do register with their address and cellphone while they're residents here, they will be included in that geographic location if the geographic location catches them. For instance, the location we used this morning was within a half-mile radius of the crime scene. So then that captured 2,000, approximately 2,000 phone calls, according to Doug Bentley. Even our department received the alert. So it's pretty, pretty robust in its ability. But it did, I just came back from lunch and a person stopped me on the street and asked me about it, wanted to know if it was a legitimate phone call. And our dispatch station was flooded with those phone calls right after it went out. People wanted to know if it was a legitimate thing, questioning why they were called and that kind of thing. I see a great use for it, and I think it was good information to get out to the public in a rapid amount of time, but I can foresee this evening, people coming home to, listening to their answering machines and hearing this, not having, you know, caught the daily news and questioning why they received that phone call. And I just want to assure people that it's legitimate, and they may hear it again.
Any other questions?
I assume this is similar to, there's been a dialogue about reverse 911, where it goes out to the people. This is the same thing?
That's correct. But the issue there is, is that reverse 911 is actually a trademarked name.
Same thing with code red in one sense.
Exactly. So people might have, you know, heard it called reverse 911. Exactly. So, people might have, you know, heard it called reverse 911, but they- this company cannot use that phrase because it's trademarked, so they use the Code RED alert. And that's their business name, so.
So, people- you said that people within a half-mile radius got this alert?
Right.
Is that all phones that were captured, or just people who had opted in, or who had local Athens cellphone exchanges?
Well, I just don't know-
Okay.
-the answer to that question. I would say it's a combination of things.
My impression is that the landlines are picked up, and then the cell phones, if they're registered. That's the way I understand it, but again, I'm getting it second-hand as well.
I believe that's accurate.
And is this the first time it's been put into use? I mean, is this like-
I can answer that.
To my knowledge, I think when we had the bacterial contamination last Halloween in the water system, I believe they used the phone system to contact people on the east side at the time. At least, that's what I was told. Not living on the east side, I wasn't aware of that.
It's been used by the county a couple times, too.
Yes. Oh, countywide? Okay. So, it is in place and has been used. It is actually a county operation that they were utilizing.
Great.
Any other questions? Going once? Going twice? Thank you, Cap. Okay. Okay, I'll proceed with my press conference here, and it'll be anticlimactic, I imagine. Let me start off. Some of the public hearings are coming forward. There will be a public hearing tonight of the Ohio Consumer Council concerning the Verizon and Frontier sale of their lines, transfer landlines. That will be at 6:00 PM at the Athens Community Center. This has to do with the transfer over of the mostly rural numbers within our system of Verizon. The Ohio Consumer Council has some opinions on it, but as I say, it's part of the PUCO, and they're accepting public hearing on it, public commentary on it. City Council also have a public hearing the 19th of this month concerning the B3 and B2 areas. There's a changeover in the zoning code for that. There's also a public forum on the sustainable transportation policy. That will be October 29th, and that will be at the community center. Take care. Next is, this is fire- we're halfway through Fire Prevention Week. This commemorates the great Chicago Fire of 1871. It is to prepare, get preparation for fires, or rather, make your house safe for fires. If you have any questions about that, call the fire department at 592-3301. Again, this was declared in 1925, I think, so this has been going on every year, and it's the month- it's the week of the 10th, the 4th to the 10th of this week, so about halfway through the week. I will also, let's see. I want to mention a couple of things about Halloween. AUBA Trick or Treat, this is the Uptown Business Association. Trick or Treat will be Monday, October 26th, 5:30 to 7:00. There will be no parking on Court Street, free parking at the parking garage during the event, and the Athens Wide City Trick or Treat will be Thursday, October 29th, between 5:30 and 6:30, followed by a Halloween parade for the children at the community center. Motors are advised to be careful during these hours for the little tricksters. The National Alliance for Mental Illness and Gathering Place will have a Walk the Walk benefit November 7th. This is their 10th. At 10:00 AM, if you're interested, call the Gathering Place Last on Halloween is, we are still soliciting volunteers for the Halloween safety teams. You would contact Assistant Service Safety Director Ron Lucas on this, 592-3340. The safety teams actually act as information sources during Halloween. They essentially cover questions for the various parties and participants of where things are going, where people are, as well as warning about unsafe practices. I've been on a couple of these myself. Usually, it's really pretty much showing, telling out-of-town guests how to get home, or where they're supposed to be, or what's going on. Occasionally, you're giving them instructions of not to be drinking in public. In other words, step off the sidewalk and onto their property if they're having a- if they have a cup of beer in their hand. I think, most of the time, it's a good time. Most of the time, it's pretty easygoing. As I say, it's usually the groups that the volunteers are made up of various neighborhood association members, some civic organizations. We usually go in teams of four. The times usually start around 8:00 PM, and they go usually a couple shifts to about 2:00 PM, 2:00 AM the next day. That'll be Sunday, November 1st, so we'll start on October 31st, just when the festivities start to gear up. We usually do loops around the city, and as I say, just talk to people and make sure they're doing okay. If there's a question, if somebody has a problem, we usually end up relaying it if it's serious enough to the police. And that's all I have on Halloween. Let's see if I cover everything right there. Okay.
Did you mention when you need to have people who are want to volunteer with the teams?
As soon as possible. Start calling in right now. We're already preparing for Halloween.
Okay, but I mean, don't you have an organizational meeting that you have sometime, like a week beforehand, or something like that?
Usually, the night of, we'll do that. If we get commitments for everybody, the idea is to show up before the 8 o'clock meeting. If you contact Ron Lucas, he'll tell you the exact time when we have a meeting. So, usually, just to get the jackets on. Eventually, essentially, what you're going to see is a lot- you put your safety team jacket on, everybody walks around saying, "Nice costume," or they don't believe you're actually a safety team. You know, it's usually a windbreaker. You get a nice big flashlight to flash in their eyes if they really are noxious. Usually, as I say, with a team of four, you usually have somebody from the city and part of your team. You usually have a radio, or have a series of numbers to call if there's a problem on your cellphone. There's an argument whether the radios are better than the cell phones. It goes back and forth, year in and year out, in terms of communication. You know, you'd think a radio just would be as easy as a cellphone, but sometimes, people have trouble with the radios, too, which buttons to push. Again, I've been on them. Usually, as I say, it's usually telling somebody where the, you know, where the hotels are. That way down East State Street, it's a long walk. You may want to get a ride. Some of them are lost. They don't know where the party is, even though it's on Court Street, two blocks away. I've done patrols of Mills Street quite regularly, and I guess what really throws me off most of the time is the people walking around barefoot in the dark. I mean, to me, it's just a- it scares me, the idea that you'd be barefoot, and there might be broken glass. But when somebody loses their flip-flops, and, you know, you've been up Halloween where the flip-flops are there, you know, because it's nice and warm, you know, they're, you know, they're there for a good time, and they lost them. And unfortunately, you know, I haven't seen too much damage on that. I'm always surprised. And as I say, the other times, it's just to let somebody know that they've- they're stepping out of their party zone, and they shouldn't be on the street with a beer cup. Let's see. And last, I want to bring up, let's see, the Athens- City of Athens has grant funding available for down payment, home rehabilitation, home repair assistance. This is part of our CHIP program, a state's CHIP program, which is an acronym for Community Housing Improvement Program. And I'll should read this whole entire thing here. Funds can help homeowners with down payment, closing costs for acquisition of single-family owner-occupied home. Home rehabilitation assistance will also be provided to sell the homes comply with Ohio Office of Housing and Community Partnership Residential Rehabilitation Standards. In other words, bring them up to standard. Also, home buying counseling is provided for all program participants. We have funds. We do this every year. Funds are available for current homeowners for both home rehabilitation and home repair, and there's a slight difference in terms of the degree of repair on that. Home rehabilitation provides comprehensive repairs and upgrades to home, while home repair assistance only addresses one or two health or safety deficiencies. The max- maximum annual income for a family of four on this, because it's geared to low and moderate income, is $43,000. $43,050, rather. $43,050. Income guidelines are adjusted according to family size. Assistance is available on first-come, first-served basis. Applications and additional information can be obtained by contacting the Hocking Athens Perry Community Action Housing Office at 740-5-753-3062, or toll-free is 1-866-992-8858, or by emailing Greg Andrews of HAPCAP Dialogue, who I have here to answer any questions. Does anybody have any questions? I have handouts for this if I spoke too soon. This is part of a program that helps with the assistance within the cities to improve some of the homeowners. This is something that the city signs up for every year. Has a- is it a five-year program, is it?
It's a two-year program.
Two-year program, okay.
And we just want to encourage folks to be aware of the program, to apply. As the mayor said, there are three activities with the program. There's the acquisition to actually assist somebody to purchase a home, and also, there's rehab dollars available to bring home into compliance, like you said. There's one slot available for that. We have actually three slots available for the private rehab. Again, bring home into compliance with the IRS, the rehab standards. To give you some dollar amounts, but they're certainly not standard. There are a lot of variables, but for the rehab and the down payment program, there's about $30,000, $35,000 available per slot. For the acquisition, for the homeownership, there is up to, potentially up to $7,000 available in down payment closing cost assistance. Those- the larger programs, they're- I'm already just taking to secure the funds, but it's a permanent declining loan. Eighty-five percent of the money that's invested is forgiven over a period of time. Fifteen percent is a permanent loan, zero percent interest. Then we also have the home repair activity that the mayor mentioned, which is up to, and again, there are variables that adjust these dollars, but up to about $8,000 to complete one or two home repairs. So, that's the program, and again, we encourage folks to be aware and to apply.
So, this is only within the city?
The county has a parallel program, right?
Yeah, we administer programs for the county, actually, the city of Nelsonville, the city of Athens, and Hocking and Perry counties.
And those other ones are available now, too, or just this one?
They're funded at different times. There's- we do have a program actually in the county now, and in the city of Nelsonville program.
You could probably call them up and find out more information if you needed.
And those would go through community action also?
Correct.
Any other questions for Greg? Any questions for me?
I just wanted to confirm, the citywide trick-or-treat time is Thursday, the 29th, 5:30 to 6:30?
Let me get that piece of paper out again, and I can answer that properly. Citywide is 6:30, 5:30 to 6:30.
Okay.
And that's the 29th. That's a Thursday. And it's usually Thursdays, the closest Thursday to Halloween. And then they usually have a parade at the community center for the kids.
Okay.
And as I say, you'll, depending on the neighborhood, sometimes you just really have to watch where you drive. Unfortunately, for me, most of the time, I'm not working. I'm usually still at work at that time, so two things happen. I either buy lots of candy and end up eating most of it, or I don't buy any candy and have to kind of shut the lights off so I don't get the tricks. In other words, I'll say, "Oh, I won't make it home in time by 6:30, and therefore, I don't buy three pounds of candy." And then I make it home at 5:00, you know, 6:00 o'clock, and I have a half hour with people looking for me. Have to plow the blinds.
Well, you can go ahead and get the candy, and if you don't use it up, you can just bring it to the news conference.
I see. Is that how I should be feeding the press candy? Is that what you're telling me?
Well, we can trick-or-treat then.
Oh, okay. With a Halloween tie, no doubt.
Of course.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Okay, and one more thing, just in retrospect and shuffling my papers, I realized, I don't know if I mentioned, the leaf pickup schedules on the web. If you haven't seen it, there's a map on the city website, there's a PDF file, and there's also protocols. I think I mentioned it last time, that we're now charging for yard waste, which means includes bags of leaves, but the loose leaf pickups are still free. The yard waste stickers are, I think, $1.50, and you can pick them up. It used to be just down here at City Hall, but now we'll have- you can buy them at the community center, as well as the water Public Works Building on Current. So, we're trying to spread it out so people can get them more easily than before. And I think that covers everything there. More questions? Okay, thanks.